Yo, if I'm being real, so it's the first day of class. It is seven freaking forty and I have to be there. Well, like our thing starts at eight thirty. It takes me thirty minutes to get there. Not ten minutes, I have to find parking, I'm so frustrated. Like, I'm not letting my running behind get the best of me or anything, but like, the crazy thing is, I woke up on time, like, I woke up at like three something because I couldn't sleep. And then, it was like, honestly, I'm a, okay, I'm the type of person, I don't really like sleep from like nerves, anything, I'm not even nervous about today. So what ended up happening was, last night, the guy I've been seeing, like, we were gonna hang out, and, um, just for a little bit, before I had to go to bed, because I was like, you know, I'm not trying to stay up all night. Y'all, then, okay, let's side note, so y'all see I have my freaking hair in a freaking claw clip back here, because I might end up taking it out, it doesn't look bad actually, but like the curls have fallen, which I expected it, of course, because I wasn't finna pin curl it. Um, but, whatever, so I had to hit my leave out this morning, no big deal. Like, honestly, last night, I should've went and gank. But anyway, y'all, I'm on the interstate. I shouldn't have focused, put my head, listen to a little music. So I will definitely talk to y'all at some point today to let y'all know how my first day is going. We're going to school. Oh my god, and it's raining, oh, it's pouring now. I honestly don't even know what to do at this point, like. Map assignment real quick. Alright, so that's done. I'm gonna get myself situated and we're gonna run in, it's eight thirteen. I'm literally looking at the building of the parking lot, so parking was straight. Okay, it's good. Alright y'all, I'mma catch y'all on the flip. Okay y'all, so I need one break. It is eleven forty-nine, I've been on break since like eleven twenty-something. And I don't have to be back up at my next thing until one thirty. Um, but I'm right outside the building, I'm in the parking lot, I'm just, you know, chilling, regrouping. There was literally nothing to film, we were literally sitting in an auditorium waiting for everyone to do a drug test. Um, they didn't talk to us, I mean, of course they talked to us, but, like, there was no like real information other than like a five-minute lecture on how to navigate canvases. Which is like Blackboard or, you know, like little school, um, app or whatever. But yeah, so I'm just hanging out, waiting on my sister to call me back. Just, you know, enjoying some peace and quiet. Um, I do have some, a couple of chapters to read tonight, so, um, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and hit it hard, I'm gonna go ahead and do it as soon as I get home. And then, uh, study a little bit, go over a few, like study my flashcards a little bit. And then, hopefully, I will, um, if I don't do it right when I get home, I might take a little break, couple hour break, and then start around maybe like six. Um, and just kind of like hang out with my, my friends, so, for a little bit, just to regroup. Um, after I get out of this next class, so. Yeah, that's it, y'all. Okay, y'all, so I just left from getting my ID made, so I have been taking classes at this school, I guess technically, for, like, since June. And I never got an ID made because I didn't feel the need to, because I was online always, so now, I'm having to get an ID made, because I need one now. And now, like, one day, I need to come up here and walk around this campus to familiarize myself with these buildings, because I'm over here now, having to ride through campus so slow. I still got an hour though before I have to be back in class, so I'm good, but, um, I just have to freaking creep through campuses because I'm looking for the cafeteria, because I need to go to the bookstore. Yeah, so. Okay guys, so, well, it's two thirty, well, it's two thirty-nine now, but I literally walked out of class at two thirty, like, I'm a solid. Then tomorrow, we don't have a lecture, we just have a lab orientation, so we don't have anything to look over tonight. Um, so what I'm just gonna do is I'm just gonna go back in and just go back over my notes that we went over today. Um, and, you know, make any more new notes that I need to make, go into detail, or just, you know, read, or, you know, look up some more information in the textbook about some stuff that I may or may not understand, like I said today, lesson was super straightforward. Put on a blanket, yeah, anyway, but, um, yeah, so, so it's gonna be a chill night, and because of that, I'm trying to pick up a shift tonight, because I know I'm not working tomorrow. Friday? Don't work Friday? No, I don't work Friday, but I'mma try to pick up Friday night. Um, and I know I work Saturday and Sunday, if I pick up, uh, Friday night, I'm not gonna work a double on Saturday or Sunday, but if I don't, I'mma work a double on one of those days. But, other than that, not too much to say, I'm about to get on the interstate and head home, so I will talk to you guys tomorrow. It's day three? It is day three, y'all, I am on time, it's seven thirty in the morning, last start's at eight thirty. Low key though, I forgot to buy my online ebook, because I had already bought hard copies of all my books, but, two of them we had to buy online, because of some online apps that come with like the access code. I forgot to do it, like, thank God, we haven't had anything like due from it, so, I was supposed to do it yesterday. Well, my mom was, and I told her I would call her when I got off work, but then when I got off, I had to do something, you know what I mean, and I just kind of forgot about it, and I didn't get in the bed until like twelve thirty. So I just forgot about it, so I text my mom just three minutes ago, so she was like, she'll go ahead and do it for me today, so I was like, okay, great, thanks. But, I didn't really get a lot of sleep last night, um, I, like I said, I got in bed around twelve thirty, I woke up at five forty-five, um, and then my alarm reset for six forty-five. So, uh, after I went back to sleep when I worked for the first time, I didn't get up until my alarm went off, but, I mean, you know how when an alarm, we should, it's like jarring? I may even stop and give me some more breakfast, y'all, because how I was barely making it the last two days, or something, so this weekend, I'mma try to get everything else that I need to buy out of the way, which isn't much, it's really like one thing, um, get that out of the way, and then I'm gonna go get some freaking like snacks and groceries and stuff like that, because I cannot eat out every day, like, that will add up so fast. Um, because I'm already commuting, you know, fifty minutes back and forth, you total, you know what I mean, so, um, like, I just can't keep doing that, but, anyway, y'all, y'all know what time it is in my drive, I only have a couple minutes before I hit the interstate, and the time has come, so I am about to listen to my music, vibe out, get my mind right. And I will check back in with you guys later, oh. I wanted to record for you guys, like, in lecture or something like that, or orientation, but, not orientation, I could've did it. But, I can't in lecture, we're not allowed to record, or even take pictures of our slides for that matter. Um, we're not allowed to do that, um. But today, we have a lab orientation, so I'm gonna try my best to like, get a little footage of that. Um, let's say it's gonna be a long day, and I'm just, uh, not excited about it, but whatever, I'll talk to you guys later. So y'all, I got home today from class, and I was so tired, so I took a nap. And, I took my nap at like four, like, I went, I finished the rest of my own, I finished adding the rest of like all of my assignments, lectures, labs, all of that to my calendar, um. My calendar looks so full, y'all, now, I'm not gonna lie, then I added like my work shifts for next week, um, because we get our work shifts a week at a time. So I went and did that, and then I took a nap right at four, and I woke up at like five fifteen. Then, I had to like return some phone calls. People love to call me when I'm asleep, child, but, so I was like, okay, let me go ahead and buckle down, because when I go to sleep in the middle of the day, I can't sleep through the night, so I was like, well, I'll just stay up a little late, tomorrow's Friday anyway, so, I was like, I'll stay up a little late, and just, you know, do my reading, my reading, I don't actually have that much to read, um, but it'll still take me a couple of hours, because I'm gonna take some notes, because we, um, went over just basically how to really break down these objectives in note take before class. So hopefully, it'll go faster than what it did when I tried to read Tuesday night, because that was not working. Um, so, and then I had some stuff to print out and upload before tomorrow. Y'all, of course, in the middle of printing, my little, uh, printer starts like making this little doorbell sound, and which just meant it was out of freaking paper, so, I had to go to Walmart and get some paper, well, excuse me, I tried to go to Walmart and get some paper, Walmart was out of paper. So I had to drive to Target, which is on the opposite side of town, like, and then I had to go the long way, because there was a wreck, if I took the shortcut, which goes back by my house, there was a freaking wreck, and I'm just like, oh my god, what could, what else could go wrong? So now it's seven o'clock, so I'll probably, I kid you not, I probably will be up to about two. Um, I may be able to get it done before like midnight, if I really, really buckle down. Um, because I really don't have that much to do, if I'm being for real, um, but still. Okay, y'all, so, it is Saturday. I did not even get a lot of rest, it is ten o'clock in the morning, I have work at eleven. But I have to go to the uniform store to get some scrub pants. So I'm gonna do that before work, because it's literally right next to my job, so, that's a plus, because they'll be closed by the time I get off, and I have lab on Monday. So, I'm gonna do that, and then, I'm gonna go to work, of course. And then I'm gonna come home and just chill, last night, um, I had my friend over, he came at like midnight, because I didn't get off till like eleven. Um, and I took a shower and stuff like that, and I just wanted to see him, because I don't really, well, I'm not really seeing him during the week right now. Um, just because of school, um, but like, y'all, it was so much fun, um, my bad, it was so much fun last night, like, I really needed that, like, de-stressing the time. Because I left school, I took a nap, and then when I got to work, I was stressed at work, like, it was so much going on. It was a lot of commotion, and for a Friday night, I really did not make that much money, I made a good bit of money, I guess, just like overall, but for a Friday night, I didn't make that much, and, yeah. But, um, it was still pretty chill, but so, I'm going in today, gotta work tomorrow. Run a few errands sweet, and then tomorrow, I'm just gonna like review what we did last week, and look over some things for this week, like, when I get off today, I'm actually going to deep clean, well, not really deep clean, but just straighten my apartment up a little bit, so that tomorrow, when I get off work, I can actually focus on studying, because I can like study in clutter. But anyways, guys, I will talk to you guys later, I might check in at the uniform store, I don't know, but, regardless, I gotta start driving. Y'all, 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 y'all! Okay, I don't know if I told y'all, I don't know if I told y'all, but, so, we took our first quiz, just a little safety quiz, on Friday, it was just like on like safety policies, um, like procedures, really. I made a ninety-six, um, but now, we have like our first quiz on like actual information, you know what I mean, like, stuff that we've been taught, and like, we're supposed to be reading and stuff like that, oh my god. So we have that today. I actually feel, I don't wanna say I feel like super prepared, but I feel good about it, I'm not gonna lie, but we gonna see. Oh! Hold on, y'all. Okay, y'all, so I had to get my privacy screen, I forgot it. Came to get the elf, over something like that, so, yeah. I gotta get on the road, because I have something, give me something to eat. Um, but y'all, yesterday was our first lab, it was just like bed making, um, and like bathing and stuff like that, and my, my, uh, clinical instructor, y'all, she is so sweet, I'm so glad I got her. Um, but, she came with me, she was like inspecting my bed, and she was like, "How did you get your stuff so straight?" Because like, it's hard, to me, it is kind of difficult, well, I'm sure to everybody, it's obviously more difficult to make an occupied bed than an unoccupied bed. But, a lot of people don't know, I used to work in a hospital, so, yeah, I had like, and I worked there for like over a year, so, and it was recent, it was like, what, last year? So, it was pretty, like, fresh on my mind, you know, um, what was she wrong for that? But, so anyway, yes, oh my god, his, his tire flat. I hope he's gonna go get him some air. But yeah, so anyways, y'all, so, I'm definitely, I'm getting into a groove also on how I do my notes, like, I'm gonna show y'all, I'm not really gonna do a video, at least not yet, on like how I do them, but I am gonna like, show y'all what I do, and it has been helping me so much. Um, because it's a way that like, well, you know, when you take notes, when you read it, you kind of really bear, barely pay attention to what you're reading. Um, so you kind of have to go back and reread your notes, to even know kind of what you wrote. Uh, but the way that like one of our instructors, uh, showed me how to do it, I'm not gonna lie, like, it's actually working, like, it is a time-consuming process, but I could still get it done, like, it's doable, I'm not gonna lie, um. But yeah, so, I'mma update y'all when I get out of class. Um, I don't have class tomorrow, I'm still gonna do a little work tonight, like, I'mma finish some notes that I was taking this morning, oh, please move, um, I'mma finish the notes that I was taking this morning this afternoon, and I come home and take my daily afternoon nap, um. And then I'm probably gonna study, like, tonight, because I do have a test on Friday as well, so, y'all, it's, it's revving up, you know, but anyway, I don't know why I'm in such a good mood, because, I don't know, whatever, we'll see if I'm still in a good mood around two o'clock, but, yeah. Um, I'm about to hit the interstate, so y'all know, I'm about to put on my music, I'll see y'all later. Okay, y'all, so I am headed to the library, I like to switch it where I study, so, yesterday, I was at like, um, the business building on campus studying. Um, I decided not even to go on campus, I decided to go to the library, like the actual city library today. I studied a little bit at home, but I'm just switching it up, um, for a couple of hours, and then I'm gonna go do some laundry and um, go to work. I know one thing, and that is, it is cold, okay? It's freezing freaking cold, my hands almost fell off when I smoked my gas. But y'all, I've been up since two this morning, I went to bed, like, I studied, y'all know, it's Friday, I got test today, so, I studied from like seven until like ten thirty. Um, and I felt pretty confident, but I wanted to save like a fresh mind for this, uh, for the chapter on infection control, um. So this morning, I woke up at two o'clock, and I didn't start really studying until about three, and I studied from like three to seven. And I'm feeling actually really good, um, I don't wanna make this a habit, but I, like I said, I really wanted to make sure that I saved like a fresh mind to look over that chapter, instead of like studying really, really late, like starting, because you know, I finished what was it, vital signs and pain around ten thirty, I wasn't gonna start a fresh, a new chapter, especially one that I really need to focus on that late. But, yeah, and plus I had like work to do for, so that's why I got started, uh, studying so late, but anyways, I do feel confident. Um, I left home about thirty minutes earlier than normal, so that I can get their album, my test, I can do some practice, um, questions and stuff like that. And that's really it, like, I don't, I, I feel good. We'll see, you know, we'll see how this goes, um, I am on the interstate, so, let me put my music back on, y'all, but I'll chat with y'all, I was trying to say talk and chat, it was I'll chat with y'all later. Okay, y'all, so it's the last day of the lot, it is Sunday, so I gave y'all two weeks' worth of content, like, I really didn't do much, I was just going to class and going to work, really. But, instead of doing like a outro like I normally do, I'mma just talk to y'all real quick. Baby, who said I was gonna go to nursing school and make all A's? Y'all, I had a breakdown Friday, and I couldn't bring myself to record it, because I just can't go out like that. But I'm telling y'all, I was crying like all day, like, after my, um, after my exam, we, we get our grade back immediately, but then they go in and like basically regrade it, you know? Um, so, um, and then they, you know, give you a final grade, so, I get my grade back, and it's a seventy-nine point five, I'm disappointed. Um, but I'm like, okay, when, when they regrade it, like, more than likely, it'll go up, y'all, didn't take them long. Get another, like thirty minutes into our lecture, we get a, you know, email that our tests have been regraded, and my score is still seventy-nine point five. And from that point forward, I didn't hear nothing else in class, because I'm thinking, I ain't no way I just made seventy-nine point five, like, I barely passed this test. And I'm like getting frustrated, because I'm like, I know I knew this material, you know what I'm saying, like, I practiced our online, like, um, questions, I practiced the questions in the back of the chapters. Like, when I would go over my objectives, I could actually like, without looking at my notes, I could like go through in detail and like answer the objectives. So I'm like, what did I do, you know what I'm saying, like, what is going on? So, my clinical instructor comes back this week, so I'm gonna meet with her, and, um, just sit down and go over my test, because, yeah, now, I will say, before we tested, uh, one of our instructors was just like, do not change y'all's answers, don't change them. So, I said, okay, but, I went back, I ain't gonna lie, I went back and changed about four, five answers, so I am interested to see which ones I got wrong, because if it's the ones I changed, I promise I would never change another answer, but, um, if it's not, then I just don't know what I thought I knew, or whatever, so, yeah. But other than that, today, I just went grocery shopping, y'all, ain't no way I went to Sam's and spent a hundred thirty dollars and only got twenty-two items. Like, but I got all produce. So, um, because I am going back vegan, y'all, I have been saying I'm going back vegan for I don't know how long. And I finally decided to do it, like, I talked to my friend today, and he was just like, yeah, he was like, I'll do what you like. I was like, I don't, I'm not gonna depend on him, because I feel like he gonna be cheating if he really do with me, but whatever, it's for myself anyway, but, my bad, y'all, but, um, so today, I'm finna ball out real quick, I'm so hungry, it's four o'clock and I haven't eaten. I didn't have a sip of water today, because I've been cleaning all day after this dog. So, I'm trying this, like, this is not vegan, I'm starting tomorrow, y'all, but, smells good, this is this Mediterranean salad that I got from Sam's, y'all, this big salad, it's a Mediterranean pasta salad, this salad was five seventy-eight. Looks pretty good, but I like little stuff like that, it's like kale, sun-dried tomatoes, pasta, Parmesan cheese, like a vinegar wrap, gotta see what else is really in there. I think, I see a crumble feta here, let's see, get a lot of slip on my fork. Yeah, I love me a good salad. It's definitely got some basil in here. Personally, I hate basil, because it's so strong. Yeah, a little bit goes a very long way. But it's actually not bad, like, it's actually good. Anyways, y'all, I'm gonna finish. put my groceries up, do my laundry and finish cleaning, because my baby finna come see me. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time with him. Now I gotta get back to the books. And I gotta practice, oh, I'mma take his vital signs. I wanted to take him last night, but he was acting crazy. So I ended up just taking like his sister who's had stuff. So, yeah. Whatever. Hey, y'all. I don't have too much else to say. This week, hopefully I do, cause I'm starting to get into a routine of how I'm studying, so this week I'm gonna try to do a little bit more content on like what I do outside of class, how I'm studying. So not only can you guys like, I guess, pull some things that I'm doing, but also tell me what's working for y'all, and say like, hey, maybe this isn't working as effectively as you think, you know, stuff like that, cause y'all, I need the help, cause I am not finna get another seventy-nine point nothing. I had my skills check off Wednesday, I'm nervous and excited at the same time. And we go to one of our facilities on Thursday, but just for like orientations, so I may take y'all in there if I can. But other than that, y'all, that's all. Not really even gonna get into the whole freaking outro, you all know, I really appreciate, appreciate y'all spending time with me. So thank you so, so much. Don't forget to like, comment, share, and subscribe if you enjoy sticking around and hanging out with me. If not, no harm, no foul, I ain't gonna say it personally, but anyways, y'all, I'm finna go.